Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call this meeting of the Board of Alderman to order. Would you please rise and recite the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, a roll call, please.
Alderman Bockelman, absent. Alderman Reese. Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Mayor Bowman.
Present. Thank you. We do have a quorum, and we have several proclamations tonight. So I'm going to start with John Cook. Your reputation precedes you. I don't know if it says a city employee or if it says guitarist. If you haven't heard this gentleman play guitar, you need to go to the Elks on Friday nights. They rock it up. So Johnny works for Chris, and so I'm going to allow Chris, first of all, to speak about him.
Oh, absolutely. Well, I got here about eight years ago as Parks Recreation Director. And when I met Johnny and was going around the park areas, I asked him, I said, "So how many full-time staff we have?" And he said, "Three." One is me, and two others who are in some part-time. Took care of about 450 acres of parkland. That's outstanding because that is well under the average for a Kansas City metro area. In other words, we should have about six. But Johnny is very efficient in the work that he does each and every day. He has seen projects such as the Omega Trail. Actually, he got that started on his own and got that trail built with staff, as well as overseeing different things coming into our department, like the Alka Pool and other projects, including the community center. So John is very reliable. He's been outstanding. And he is retiring here in a couple of weeks. He just said nine days. So we're going to miss John very much. But congratulations on 35 years. You've been outstanding.
I know we have some members of the Park Board here, and we also have some Parks Recreation staff. I know we have Phil here and Art and Jay. For 35 years, I think you're entitled to say something about this. Do you think any of you want to say?
Honestly, yes. You guys, you couldn't ask for a better guy. For one, to be your boss, to be your friend, and to run the department that he's done. Great job, great friend. Going to miss him dearly. I'm sure you guys will say.
Yep, I'll pay you later.
So please join me again and congratulate Johnny Cook for 35 years. Come on, David. You've been on the Park Board long enough.
Oh, you're going to get me in the picture this time? I guess so.
So get on.
All right, everybody. Three, two, one.
All right. This proclamation goes to Project Connect Day. That would be Ides Shepard. Do you have anyone else with you?
I do.
Well, bring them on up. Tell us who's here.
This is Micah.
Hi, Micah. Michael Lindberg. One of you.
This is my husband.
Yes, I recognize you. Absolutely.
So I want to read this proclamation. This is an important day, and it's a very important ministry that these people are doing. I know it's the second year. Last year was the first year, and I was able to participate then, and I'm going to participate with them this time. This proclamation says, "Project Connect Day in Harrisonville on October 19, 2018. Whereas many residents are struggling to make ends meet, community residents are coming together to adopt and implement plans to serve vulnerable population groups and help those neighbors in need. Whereas each day across the state of Missouri, many people struggle to make it day-to-day. More than 1/30 are children, 1/5 are seniors, and many are on medicated medical. And whereas each day in the county of Cass, the city of Harrisonville, many people are being cared for and assisted by one of the many nonprofits and churches serving our community. And the community of Harrisonville and the 100-plus member alliance of nonprofits, churches, schools, social service agencies, businesses, and concerned citizens in the area need to serve our most vulnerable neighbors, who cooperated and collaborated, rallying around the homeless, providing homelessness, and serving helpless people with access to food, education, housing, utilities, health, and economic and family security, and other things. And whereas on October 19, 2018, many concerned individuals are working together with concerned citizens of the area, coordinating an event that has become nationally recognized best practice, found now in more than 900 cities across the U.S., called Project Connect, or Project Homeless Connect. On this day, communities will bring a wide range of services and service providers to one place, and actually provide free services and meet needs in a one-stop shop on that day, utilizing many community volunteers. Guests will be linked and matched with a volunteer helper in a specific distance since they need to begin their process, which will move them from dependency to self-sufficiency and help them more quickly regain stability in their lives, including access to birth certificates, photo IDs, haircuts, chiropractic corrections, and a variety of sunscreen and many other certs. And whereas this action is a beginning step in serving the group of our neighbors, something which must be done in our city and county, allowing any person to cooperate and collaborate to meet needs. Now, therefore, I, Judy Bowman, Mayor of the city of Harrisonville, join the leaders of our local government to hereby proclaim October 19 as Project Connect Day in Harrisonville, and join these leaders to challenge citizens, businesses, civic and faith organizations across the county to support this and other efforts to help those struggling in our community in our area. So I am proud to present this to you, to thank you for your work in the community. Absolutely. Congratulations. Thank you, people, for your work. Good to see you. Okay. This would be Mr. Greenwood and Joe. Do you all want to step forward? These gentlemen are from Casco. And we're going to do this proclamation in honor of National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
That's good.
Hi, Joe. So most of us know about Casco and the great work that they do, and something that's only fitting and appropriate is that we recognize that with the proclamation. Workplaces welcoming the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and a strong economy. In this spirit, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month this October to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. Activities during this month will reinforce the value and its talent of people with disabilities, add to our workplace and communities, and affirm Harrisonville, Missouri's commitment to be an inclusive community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. In so doing, I call upon all employers, schools, and other community organizations in Harrisonville to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year. So I congratulate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Do you have anything you'd like to say to Mr. Greenwood?
I just appreciate all the community support that we've received over the many years that we've been here. We were established in 1975, so we've been in the community a long, long time. And I just want to appreciate that and tell everybody thank you for all the support that you've given us.
I just want to get a workout tonight.
Can you send me a picture?
All right, Harrisonville, Casco Business Women in Missouri. Come on up. Good evening. Hello, gentlemen. How are you? I know women personally because I'm a member of this group. It gives me great honor to... Someone else here?
Well, Donna.
So this is a proclamation for the Harrisonville, Casco Business Women in Missouri Week 2019. Whereas working women constitute 72 million, or almost half, of the nation's workforce, and women-owned businesses account for 30% of all U.S. business. And whereas Harrisonville, Casco Business Women in Missouri was organized in 1927 as a social and a study club and became charter in business and professional women in September of 1928. And whereas it is their mission to achieve equity for all women in the workplace through advocacy, education, and information. And whereas their local mission focuses on helping women and charities in the community by providing scholarships and educating young women on safety and workplace entry. And whereas Harrisonville, Casco Business Women in Missouri work to elevate the standards for women wherever they may be employed. And whereas Casco Business Women in Missouri promote the interests of working women to bring about a spirit of cooperation among all working women and extend opportunities for education, information, and fellowship. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, you are seated behind me, and the city of Harrisonville, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, do hereby proclaim October 20th to the 26th of 2019 as Harrisonville, Casco Business Women in Missouri Week, and urge all citizens, civic, and fraternal groups, working women, to support working women by encouraging and promoting the celebration of the achievements of all business and professional women as they contribute daily to our economic, civic, and cultural purposes. Congratulations. Do you want to tell us who you are?
I'm Jenny Calmer.
Judy Muzich.
Marilyn Kramer.
I have one more. Maybe I stayed the best until that. The fire department, please join me. This is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. Hi, guys. How are you? Ms. Olson. Good to see you, sir. Charlie, sir. Good to see you again. She, good to see you. I saw these guys and some of the guys that are dressed in blue in action a couple of weekends ago when we had the rain event in Harrisonville. I'm telling you, I'm proud to have them. It wasn't a fire, but you were there and answered the call. So Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the city of Harrisonville is committed to ensuring the safety of all of its residents, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and whereas the Harrisonville Emergency Services is currently a combination of career and volunteer staff whose services include fire suppression, hazardous materials response, confined space rescue, and numerous other rescue procedures. And whereas the Harrisonville Emergency Services strives to continually educate our citizens about the hazards of fire and proper fire prevention techniques. Now, therefore, I, Judy Bowman, Mayor of the city of Harrisonville, and the Board of Aldermen designate October as Fire Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to use the utmost caution around fire and open flames now and throughout the year. Congratulations, guys. Give them another round of applause. At this point, I would just ask you to silence your cellphones if you haven't already done so. And this is our public participation time. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the board, please step forward. You can utilize that microphone over there, right over here. And please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
I am Obie Carl, 27917 South Bobby Road, Harrisonville. The Burner, the Law Cabin Festival, has come and gone, and it was a huge success. I would like to congratulate and thank several people. Number one is the city of Harrisonville. They put countless hours in and did a fantastic job. The street department kept all the trash dumped, and they even followed the 4-H pet calf around and took care of what remained. And so Chief Hofer, as usual, was very, very good about keeping the security in check. We did get a shower or two. And I would like to thank Judy Bowman, Mayor Bowman, for being our grand marshal. And even though she got drenched for the cause, she never lost her radiant smile or her sense of humor. Thank you.
Thank you, Obie. You're much too bashful, because a lot of that would not have happened without you. So a round of applause for Obie Carl. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board this evening? Seeing no one, I'll close public participation, and we'll move on to our agenda items, beginning with the approval of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen minutes of the work session September 16, 2019. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson, with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Now moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen, September 16, 2019. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson, with a second from Alderman Davidson. All in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen stand approved. And now moving on to the minutes of the executive session from September 16. I'm sorry. Who, Luke? Okay. A motion from Alderman Turner, and a second from Alderman Dickerson? No, I'm sorry. Alderman Miller, thank you, to approve. Please, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the executive session stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items, Park Board appointment.
We have a vacancy on the Park Board, and Mayor Bowman has recommended the appointment of Vanessa Hargrave to fill that vacancy.
And Vanessa is in the audience this evening, so I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve the appointment of Vanessa Hargrave to the Park Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Vanessa. Mr. Neal, Ms. Ferris, Mr. Atkinson, you all have a new member in your tribe. And I'm sorry, and Ms. Franklin also. All right. Christmas on the Square permit. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen. For you tonight is the annual Christmas on the Square event permit. Not many changes from years past. This event has gone on for several years without any complaints. Hopefully, a lot of good weather and a great event. They're asking to close the square from 2:00 to 7:00 on December 7, 2019, so that they can have their marriage Christmas tree lighting, caroling, many different things that I've included in my memo. Without any problems or concerns in the past, staff recommends approval. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? I guess there are no questions for you. All right. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor of approving Council Bill 65?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 65 is approved and becomes resolution... Resolution? I'm sorry. Okay. Christmas on the Square. Apologize. Lot going on tonight. So the permit for Christmas on the Square is approved. All right. Moving on now to Council Bill 65.
Council 65 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrators to waive a building permit fee for damaged structures in the event of a natural disaster or severe weather event causing damage to buildings and properties and establishing an effective date.
We talked about this at the debriefing meeting that we held with the department heads and the Ward for Aldermen. And we talked about the fact that in the flood of 2017, we had agreed to waive the fees for building permits for people that needed to do reconstruction down there. We thought that it would be good to go ahead and have a resolution on our record so that any time that there's an emergency declared, we don't have to stop and ask for the permission of the Board of Aldermen to grant that waiver. So that's why you're seeing that this evening. So I'd like to entertain a motion. Anyone have questions, first of all? But then I entertain a motion on Council Bill 65. Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Turner, with a second from Alderman Miller, to approve Council Bill 65. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now Council Bill 65 is approved and becomes Resolution 042. Council Bill 66.
Council 66 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri endorsing an application for $4,500 and state-funded, state of Missouri historic preservation grant funds to update the Harrisonville Historic District Preservation Plan and Architectural Guidelines.
Mr. Crowe.
The Historic Preservation Commission has submitted an application for state funding. It's a large application, $4,500. Our match would be $3,000 to update our now 20-year-old Historic Preservation Plan and Design Guidelines. It's probably going to be a multi-year thing, but depending upon whether you get help from the state. But in the competition, you get extra points for having a resolution from the Board of Aldermen. So for points, I can prepare a lot of resolutions.
Questions for Mr. Crowe. And my understanding is that $3,000 is currently in the budget?
Correct.
Yes. See, no questions. I entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Let's see. All right. I have a motion from Alderman Milner, looking for a second.
Second.
A second from Alderman Dickerson, to approve Council Bill 66. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 66 passes and becomes Resolution 043. Moving on to Alderman and committee reports. I'll start with Alderman Dorhoff.
I was at the last couple of Chamber of Commerce board readings. Hadn't been there very long, but I can see the tremendous amount of work and effort they put into the Law Cabin Festival. I was there Friday night, and I thought it went off great. Makes us so proud, and it's a pleasure being a part of it.
I have nothing. Well, I do, of course. Anytime we have a meeting like we did this evening, where people are emotionally vested in what's going on, and every single person in this room was emotionally vested. All the members of the board have struggled over this issue, and we do have sympathy for those people who are having so much problems. I myself have had basement problems. In the past, I had one flooded clear to the point that my freezer floated out from the wall with full of food. So those things happen, and it's devastating. It's absolutely devastating. And I think that every member of this board pledges to do the very best that they can, and honestly have been doing what they can in the past.
Only thing I'd like to add tonight, that retirement also for Randy Gentry of the Harrisonville Water Department. Does the state have any years? But I think it's close to 30. 325 to 30.
Somewhere between the 25 range.
Yeah. And that's on Thursday, October 10, June 2, the Harrisonville Water Department. So please come by and congratulate Randy as well. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say I share the frustration of these people that came from the fourth ward tonight that have been flooded. I think that we don't need to have any more meetings with any more slideshows until we give them some facts or some action. That's what they all want. And I'm glad the state representative were here tonight. I hope he follows suit with his promise to clean those drains out and rechanalize that river. That's all.
Being involved last Saturday, I listened as well to Judy Bowman and all, Mayor Bowman, excuse me, and other Ward for Aldermen here. And we do take this very seriously. And I would like to commend, as Mayor Bowman said earlier, commend all the departments. So I know a lot of people, the fire department, the police department, get a lot of kudos for what they did. And I think probably some maybe saw a video of a police officer going into the flood, up to his chest, getting four elderly people out of cars. But also, street department, other departments that worked tirelessly during the night and the next day or so, getting services back and everything else. I'd like to commend all the departments of the city for what they did that night. And hopefully, we can move forward from this, learn some things, and help the members of Ward 4 and some of the other wards that have got some flooding this last week.
I don't have much to add to what they said. I was after also trying to see who needed help and look where we can help them in the future. Hopefully, we can get some stuff resolved for them and help prevent them happening.
Thank you, Alderman. A report from the city administrator.
First of all, I'd like to echo Obie's comments about the successful festival we had, and appreciate all the work that everybody in the community puts into that. It's not just the city staff. It's not just the chamber. It's everybody in the community that comes together and makes a festival like that. And it's kind of a big circle, because that in turn is one of the things that makes a place to live into a community. So we appreciate that again. Also wanted to thank the members of the staff, the different departments that were involved in the storm event we had about 10 days ago. And the response to that was, as you would expect, people out there doing their jobs, sometimes leaving their problems at their own houses behind to come out and to help the public out in whatever ways we could. During the first part of the evening when we had the session with the Corps of Engineers, we also had a couple of representatives here from the U.S. Geological Survey. And the city's also been working with the survey on some flood-related efforts as well. And the city's also been working with the survey on some flood-related efforts as well. And one of the things that they're preparing is a proposal for us to establish some warning systems with a combination of stream gauges and rain gauges in the right places in those drainage districts. And in conjunction with the modeling work that the Corps is doing, we believe we'll be able to come up with some early warning system that we can trigger in whatever ways that we can reach out to people, whether it's, you know, with telephone apps that can call people that have signed up for that, if it's in your drainage area, or alerts over the electronic media. However, you know, there's a variety of ways that we can do that. But developing that system, we think will be, again, we can't stop it from raining and we can't stop the water from flowing. But to give every help to our citizens and able to deal with it, that's going to be one of the things that they're working on as well. Didn't have a chance to have them be part of the presentation. They did go next door, so I'm hopeful that they have a chance to talk to some people about that. But that'll also be coming up for the board's consideration later on. Finally, we had a meeting, workshop, at our last workshop, we had some rad information that we discussed, and there were a couple of questions raised on that. And I believe Director Patterson has already handed out. So you should have the answers to those questions about our history of utility rates of the neighboring communities and other communities with similar utility systems as we have. Population, some of those questions. Anyway, we had those. Want to make sure we had those answers for you.
Thank you. Questions from the media?
I have one item, not on the agenda, but was reviewing some notes. And a few months ago, there were some issues on the employee health insurance programs. And I was thinking it was either October or November, you were supposed to have new bids or proposals or something for some type of plan. And I was wondering what the status was.
Okay.
We have gone out for qualifications, or requests for qualifications from brokers to provide insurance services for the city for the upcoming year. The insurance year for the city is starting July 1st. So it's not our fiscal year or our budget year or anything. Our insurance coverages are good through June 30th. And we're not also, we're not just looking at our employee health insurance, but also all of our insurance coverages, whether it's property casualty liability, work comp, all those things like that. We have not actually gone out in the marketplace, if you would, for a number of years on those items. And so we'll be reviewing overall our scope of insurance, what our coverages are, and what are the best options that we have available. We just got those RFP requests in. We received those last week. So we're internally looking at those and reviewing those to find a candidate who would be the best one to bring it to the board for our recommendation approval.
And you had to pull some money from other funds to fund it through the end of this year. So our change is being, are you going, in other words, are we going to stay through the 30th of June and you're going to have to allocate money to it? Or are you, there was talk about a six-month to get out. Is it possible you'll be getting out in January?
No, we're looking at staying with our current insurance providers through the end of the policy year, that is to say, June 30th of 2020.
So you're just going to have to increase profits?
That is correct.
Thank you. Before we close, I just want to, I guess, commend the community again for the Log Cabin Festival. It's your festival. And the people that are in this room and people who volunteered ours and who worked, did it for the city and did it for the community. And there were people from all over. I was on the square all weekend. I heard good comments from everybody. And so once the, once the rain subsided, it turned out to be just a great event. So thank you again for everybody who contributed. Thank you for city staff for all that you did. I do have a thank you note with me from parents and teachers. They wanted city staff to know that they appreciated us taking time. This is what it says. "Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to bring a vehicle to our Touch a Truck event. It was a huge success and we couldn't do it without support from our community." That from the parents and teachers and all the kids that were able to participate. So that completes our agenda items. I would entertain Alderman Milner.
I make a motion to adjourn to Executive Session pursuant to RSOM, RSMO 610.0213, hiring, firing, and disband employees.
I have a motion that the board move to Executive Session. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Davidson. As soon as you get that written down, could I have roll call, please?
Yes ma'am. Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman abs, yeah, Alderman Bockelman is absent.
Thank you. That motion passes. We're adjourned to Executive Session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight.